Good afternoon. It is November 7th at 6:00 PM. And we'll call the Freetown Board of Selecting meeting to order. Note, this meeting is being recorded and will be available on our town YouTube page. We will be going into executive session and then returning into open session. We will be going into executive session for the following reason. Mass General Law, Section 30A, Section 21A4 to discuss the deployment of or strategy regarding security personnel or devices. I would also like to note that Selectman Matthews will be joining us momentarily. So with that, I will make a motion to go into executive session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectman O.
Aye.
Yes.
Selectman Zager.
Yes.
Alright, so we are now back in open session. I have joined in the meantime. So, agenda item two is executive session minutes from 10/24/2022. So all entertain a motion to approve but not release the executive session minutes from 10/24/2022.
Motion made. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next is the open session minutes from the same date. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the open session minutes from 10/24/2022.
Motion made. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, so now we have items for surplus which are attached in B of the packet. Looks like a bunch of computer stuff, probably outdated.
Very.
Very outdated. They're all in the basement right now next to the old toilet.
Yep. So the plan is just to declare a surplus and then just recycle it?
Yeah, we'll wipe any data that's on the plane and then recycle or destroy.
Alright, great. I don't know issues with the items?
No.
Discussion? Alright, so with that, I will entertain a motion to declare the items listed in attachment B a surplus and approve to wipe the data clean and recycle slash destroy the equipment.
Motion made. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, next we have snowplow contracts. So I'm assuming all the, I mean, look, there's a lot of information for all of them, but they all have all the required documentation and insurance, everything else?
Correct.
Alright, great. So I'll name them all and I'll just do one motion to approve them?
Yeah.
Okay, so we have Timothy Pinto, SM Automotive, we have Wayne, uh, where she is?
Crotto.
Crotto, Wayne Crotto. Dylan Hendrick, Zussi Brothers LLC, Nate's Oil Burn Services Inc., Vincent Carpen. Probably wrong there too. Barry Amaral, Matthew Denal, and Lazo's Welding and Fabrication LLC. So I'll entertain a motion to approve the snowplow contracts for those mentioned.
Motion made. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, next is the speed message signs. So these are obviously signs that will tell you how fast you're going and tell you to slow down when you're going too fast. One thing I didn't, I was, you know, going through that documentation pretty quickly, but where are these going to be located?
So one is actually a sign board, like a digital sign board that will have your speed on it as well, but it could also be used for, you know, like road repairs, slow down, things like that.
Yeah.
And the other one is just a sign that will tell you when you go too fast. They're portable.
Okay.
So the chief will set them up where and when he thinks they're necessary. These were paid for by a grant that I received for Sharon Street's grant that I received a while back. So the funds for these are all grant paid for.
Yeah, I was, I was, I'm happy to hear that. There was some sticker shop there. These signs are not inexpensive.
No, they're not. So this was a Sharon Street grant that was awarded to the town for equipment purposes and we were able to purchase the, that, that, the big digital sign, which will have a speed sign on it, but also a separate portable speed sign that can like hook onto a telephone pole.
Yep.
So he might put some wherever he has concerns of the speed rate. And also with that grant, we got, we got, I call it the woolly mammoth, some kind of a tractor that files sidewalks.
Woolly mammoth?
I don't know what it's really called.
Yeah, it was awesome though.
It's the woolly mammoth and.
Subtract.
Chuck was able to order that for the highway department with the same grant funds. It was starting with some $43,000, $44,000.
Wow, that's awesome.
Cause it's just a nice little bonus for our departments to get some equipment that we otherwise wouldn't be able to get.
Yeah, that's great.
So this is just to have the contract so we can get the equipment ordered and ready and in.
Perfect. Any questions or thoughts on this?
You know, the concerns I have is looking at it, I think it's mitigated, but we have a bylaw that says no, no digital signage. Is this because it's portable and not fixed? Does that bypass that?
It should. I mean, it's like a safety concern. It'll be a safety sign. And we, we got one last year with a grant as well. The highways, so we were, Chuck applied for a grant through Meyer and got a grant for one. So now we have two, which oftentimes we need things one each end of the town. You know, we have such a large sort of span of space in the town, so this will complement that as well.
I think, yeah, sometimes I think they should put one on the bay shores so some people fly around. Alright.
I wouldn't mind seeing someone around the town instead of going there and changing the, the old President Wright stickers, right?
Yeah, exactly.
So, but that's another time.
For town meetings, yeah. Alright, great. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agreement between the Town of Freetown and All Traffic Solutions Inc. for the speed message sign and speed back, speed feedback sign.
Motion made. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next is the contract extension between the Town of Freetown and JRD Incorporated for flushing manholes, seeping pits to 12/31/2022. And it was originally supposed to end?
In October. I just, and it was just a manpower issue. So I have spoken to Jim Zander from JRD, so we can get it done by the end of the year. So it's just an extension of the existing contract, just so that we can guarantee payment to them.
Perfect. Any questions, sir?
No.
Alright, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the contract extension between the Town of Freetown and JRD Incorporated for flushing manholes slash seeping pits to 12, did I say that wrong?
No.
To 12/31/2022.
Motion made. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Well, Tom's question is today.
Okay, so that takes care of our selecting portion of the agenda. So I'll take it over to Personnel.
Alright, agenda item number eight. Discussion vote on whether to approve the new rates for health insurance for retirees. Well, like, like we've heard on, you know, news and everything else, everything's going up in the following year. So it looks like we're looking at 1.3%, 1.31%, one section and 2.4% for medics two plan. So they're in line with the rest of the country. Nothing really we can do about it. There's no really negotiating, saying, hey, we only want to pay 2%. Not gonna happen. So they kind of make their own rates and it's, it's not as bad as the federal, but it's still going up. So something to look into or look at. But pretty straightforward. Any additional questions?
Nope, just very straightforward.
Yeah. Alright, I entertain a motion to approve the new rates for health insurance for retirees.
I'll make that motion.
I will second it.
All in favor?
Aye. Yeah, I didn't see a date on there either. I was looking for that as well. Alright, item agenda number nine. Discussion vote on whether to approve the agreement between the Town of Freetown and Kimberly Fails effective 11/17/2022 through 3/31/2023. So this one's, I guess, you guys, all of us know. So she, Kim decided that she was gonna retire or, you know, move on to the next chapter of her life in the future. But when we looked at the applicants that we hired for her replacement, there wasn't anyone that was like, you know what, you can just come into, come in and turnkey ready, ready to roll. So we hired the agenda number 10, Mr. Parent. He's a great candidate, very smart, but Kim has decided to stay on to help the town and almost in a way mentor him to be the best economy could possibly be. So this is a win-win for the town, win-win for Matt and for the department. So this is just the contract to approve that to move forward from her effective retirement date, which was this month, to another six months into March.
Yeah, I think having the overlap is huge and requires, I definitely support this agreement.
Teaches him this side, right?
Absolutely. The municipality part, which she doesn't really know. He knows the accounting portion. We didn't know the law structure that comes with it. And she's gonna be there primarily, I think, what, eight hours a week, Deb, right?
Yeah.
And she's, and she's an hourly employee now, right? So.
Correct.
Yeah, me hourly, yep.
And now that, so there's no benefits, right, for that?
No.
Okay, so, you know, that's actually good, which is good for the, you know, financially for the town, obviously.
Yeah, this is, this is, this is, we're lucky in the, you know, because it will ensure a smooth transition.
Yeah.
And as you know, that's a very viral in our town.
Extremely important. And that gives, and that gives us enough, I mean, obviously there's so much knowledge that Kim has in there, but that gives at least a good, good chunk of time for her to transfer that knowledge.
Absolutely. This is a win-win for everybody across the board. So there's no further discussion. I entertain a motion to approve the agreement between the Town of Freetown and Kimberly Fails effective 11/17/2022 through 3/31/2023.
I'll make that motion.
I will second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Agenda 10 is discussion vote whether to approve the agreement between the Town of Freetown and Matthew Parent effective 11/14/2022 through 6/30/2025. So this is the individual that we had here in front of us before us, the previous, previous meeting. He's the person that we also elected to become the new accountant. And this is just, again, his agreement. He's worked with us as far as what to pay since knowing that he's new to the municipal world. So we're getting, I think, a great deal for a great person. I think it's, again, a win-win having Kim on board.
Perfect.
So I entertain a motion to approve the agreement between the Town of Freetown and Matthew Parent effective 11/14/2022 through 6/30/2025.
I'll make that motion.
I will second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Number 11, I'm gonna skip to the last one on the agenda board. That one might be a little later versus the other ones. So we'll jump onto agenda 12, and then we'll go, after 14, we'll go back to 11. So discussion vote on whether to approve the following appointments. So I'm just gonna read them all and then.
If we have any holds.
Yep. So Section 12A, Christine A. Albertson as signal operator full-time effective 11/1/2022 through 6/30/2023. 12B, Victoria A. Ashley, Brianna M. Ferreira, Haley M. Harrison, R. Orion K. Silva, and Lauren R. Sunshine as signal operator part-time trainee effective 11/1/2022 through 6/30/2023. Agenda 12C, Caterina Maderos as signal operator part-time trainee effective 11/2/2022 through 6/30/2023. Agenda item 12D, Kevin V. Dismeris, the Soil Conservation Board effective 11/7/2022 through 6/30/2023. Agenda item 12E, Charles B. Sullivan to Soil Conservation Board effective 11/7/2022 through 6/30/2025. Agenda item 12F, Christopher Mather, Mather, sorry, Christopher, if I butchered that, to Soil Conservation Board effective 11/7/2022 through 6/30/2025. Agenda item 12G, Keith Mellow to Conservation Board effective 11/7/2022 through 6/30/2023.
You say you're soil conservation.
Oh, back to 12G, Keith Mellow Soil Conservation Board effective 11/7/2022 through 6/30/2023. Thank you, sir. Item agenda 12H, Margaret M. French to Soil Conservation Board effective 11/7/2022 through 6/30/2024. 12I, Matthew Parent as Town Accountant effective 11/14/2022 through 6/30/2023. Item agenda 12J, Kimberly S. Fails as Department Assistant effective 11/17/2022 through 3/31/2023. Any discussion or vote or any concerns? Excellent. I hereby entertain a motion to appoint the aforementioned members from 12A to 12J to their effective boards and committees effective on those dates as so spoken.
Alright, I'll make that motion.
I will second it.
All in favor?
Aye. That was a, well, well.
Yeah.
2023, and Article 10, it says.
Which one you look at, sir?
So in Article 10, it said effective through June 30th to 2025. But an I just went June 30th, 2023.
Right, they'll get renewed.
They get re-jalocked. And the effective board on the sign-on date will be the one we just voted on. But good call, good catch. Item agenda 13, discussion and vote whether to approve the pay rate for Joseph Bisco of $40 an hour and/or inspection of interim building inspector effective 11/8/2022. So Joe's been, since Jeff's moved, he's been coming in and taking, taking on whatever was in front of him. So he's been doing a great job, $40 an hour. That's a pretty reasonable rate based on what they make already as a inspector commissioner. So it's a cost of doing business these days, I guess.
Yeah, that's.
Are we, are we gonna be interviewing for a full-time replacement?
We, we already begun that, the process.
Alright.
And, yeah, we can talk more about it afterwards.
Mr. Bisco lives around.
Yeah, Mr. Bisco.
Knows, you know, knows everything, so always turnkey, boy to the house, so.
Cause he's interested in the full-time position.
I think he's teaming up with retired when he comes back.
And he fills in, yeah, he retired from former, he fills in Berkeley currently. And he's been our backup inspector all along. But he's filling in now. He's got office hours two days a week and he's doing inspections as well. And he had different rates for that, like so much for the office, so much for the inspections and it just gets a little confusing. So he asked me, you know, he was like, I give more money in other towns, so there it is. Probably paying $35 for an inspection. And we actually pay maybe a little bit more per hour. So this will be easier if it's just going straight rate, whether he's in the office or doing an inspection.
Yep, it's, it's needed as well.
But to answer your question, Trevor, we did just interview five individuals for the department. Tuesday, Monday, Thursday, I don't know, they all blend in these days. But as far as item agenda 13. I entertain a motion to approve the pay rate for Joseph Bisco at $40 an hour and/or inspection for building interim inspector effective 11/8/2022.
Make that motion.
I will second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item 14, discussion and vote to increase the principal clerk for building department facilities hourly rate by $1 an hour for working without a department head until such time that he/she is fully trained beginning 10/28/2022. So this one really ties into the 13 discussion we just had. The staff there is, you know, they're kind of, you know, taking care, take care of the office while the department head's not, not in play at this moment, right? So they're doing additional duties and having that additional pay, you know, goes a long way letting them know that not only do we appreciate it, but also the hard work they're putting into that position, so.
I think there's no brainer to it. The only question I have is are we gonna have any issues with the union by giving an additional stipend on top of regular pay?
This is, this dollar is allocated in the union contract that states that they have to do any training or, you know, that, you know, that they can get this additional dollar. So it shouldn't create any other issues.
Perfect.
They're going to pay.
Okay. Yeah, no, I, I think that's great. I just don't want to have a, a union issue because we gave someone something for.
Yeah.
Shouldn't be an issue.
As the case, I entertain a motion to approve the increase to the principal clerk for the building department facilities hourly rate by $1 for working without the department head until such time that he or she is fully trained beginning or back ended to 10/28/2022.
I'll make that motion. I will second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, back to item agenda number 11. Discussion and vote on who to appoint to the Council of Aging, Library Committee, Building Committee, from the list of interested parties listed in attachment A. Attachment A has been provided to us on a separate page for ease, ease and convenience. As we decided on the previous meeting on 10/24/22, we added two alternates to that. So, so now we choose three from library representatives, three from Council of Aging, four members at large, one of us board of selectmen, and then two alternates. I think this has been remapped to look at library, Council of Aging, senior representatives, members at large, and of course us. So, you know, looking at all the different departments that all these individuals served on, I think the way to look at this is really, as far as interested parties, who wants to be what? Go through the list, you know, library representatives, we have Linda Forrier, Paul Sadek, Paul Lubin, Beverly Sadek, and Nicole, sorry, Nicole Devignon, give it the French twist, which is just library, not a resident, but I think should be a good candidate as one of the alternates, right? I think that's a quick no-brainer there. She'd have some insight as far as the two alternates we added, 10/24. And then I, library representative, to make it simple, I think everyone here wants to be part of this committee because they, they love what they do for the COA in the library. You know, to me, top three, Linda Forrier, Paul and Paul for library committees, representatives. What do you gentlemen think?
Yeah, I mean, I think, yeah, Paul Sadek, Paul Lubin and Nicole for the library.
Yep.
That makes sense to me.
One, two, three. So Paul, so.
Travis and Nicole.
Nicole would be the one resident that, the one alternate added by the board of POS, but she's not a resident. Is that something we can do or do they have to be at large?
Yeah, she's, I mean, she's the library director, right? So she kind of needs to, I think it's important that she's on there.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it 100% makes.
Paul's obviously been very involved and I think that, you know, it'd be crazy for us not to include him.
Yeah, I'm not sure that we can have a resident.
Really?
Could you leave, leave it out, leave it on there for now and then we'll get a second alternate if you can't be on there for whatever reason.
I think, yeah.
Okay. Alright, we'll leave it on there for now and then we'll pick a second alternate.
Yeah, we'll, I mean, check, check for council on that.
Council of Aging senior representatives, Thomas Matthews, just gotta check, no, any relation to you?
No.
Okay, just checking, just see if anybody in the home, no relation, we're, we're good.
Not that I know of. Although my dad's building name is Thomas.
Oh, don't get me. Make sure everyone's, you know. Oh, he, I, oh yeah, absolutely, Mr. Wilkins.
Selectman O.
Yes.
Are you just gonna go through them all and then vote? Or did you, did you intend to vote for the three library reps?
Yes, I'm writing them down and then at the end, I'm gonna read all their names so that it's for the record. And then we'll discuss the one, two, three, then at the end we'll circle back and say, hey, here's who we decided on and we'll vote on those each one. That way we get through the, the back and forth discussion and get back to the voting.
Okay.
Alright, thank you. Thanks for keeping me honest. Council of Aging, our senior representatives, our selections are Thomas Matthews, no relation to Trevor Matthews for the record, Wayne J., Norman Lenderville, Lenderville, sorry, Norman, Kathy Talbot, and of course Robin Kendrick for the COA chair. You know, again, all interested parties, all want to be there. You know, I, I think Robin's already got like a, a voice in the whole thing. So I, I wouldn't necessarily choose her for, for this. I think she'd be a lot of great input. She's already gonna have a bite at the apple instead because she's already the COA chair. So I think Thomas Matthews, Wayne J. and Norman, again, been down, I'll see you.
I will disagree that. I think the COA chair should be involved, right? Because they are the chair of the board and yes, they're, I, I get where you're coming from, but she's also listening to her board and then coming forward with information. So I like the idea, you know, and people, residents are gonna tend to go to her, right? Because if they know she's in charge of it, so I, I feel like she's someone.
Like, she's, I, I guess one, one way of framing it is like, she's got a quorum, right? Like, she's gonna, she's gonna have to go there anyways, right? She's, she's gonna want to be involved in this. She's gonna be there, right? And I think it might make sense for her to be on the, on the board itself. I don't know, that's just kind of my thought.
Yeah, no, I thought of that. I was, now I start thinking it's like, do we want new faces, new voices, kind of keep it neutral?
I think a mixture of both.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, just.
Mr. Wilkins, just say your name.
Wayne, Wayne J.
Just for the record, I think.
Wayne J., I'm sorry.
Yeah.
So other names mentioned, you know, Wayne J., Norman Landerville, Kathy Talbot. For clarifying, we're just senior citizens who happen to use it. I believe we're members at large for consideration on selection to the committee. We're not COA board members.
Good point, but yeah.
I don't think anybody, any of these members of board members except for.
Well, I believe Robin Kendrick, I think, is on the COA.
She's the chair.
Board.
But the other ones are not on the COA.
I think we need to rate.
Yeah, yeah, that makes sense.
Three people who make decisions who are on the board for the COA, the COA director. You know, the rest of us are members at large. Citizens at large, I'm.
Which is interesting. Cause like we have, like we have it broken down into three sections, which is like library representative, COA, and then at-large, but, but that's my, like, I, you know, I think we should have had the list of the people on the actual council on aging area.
It's, it's only Norman that's on the board.
That's how it works, right? Cause you, you're obviously, the rest of these ones are involved.
Yeah, we're, we're interested, but from what I can see, there's only one person here from the COA board.
Good point.
Well, they're also senior representatives, the way it's written, convolving senior representatives.
Yeah, I guess. Technically, you're a senior representative, right? If you're technically, if you're a citizen. I think, I think we could work that, make that work.
Well, I think it's easy to say, Mr. J., there's one.
Only if my name spelling is correct.
Oh, yeah.
Oh.
It is J.A.Y.E.
Forgot E.
J.A.Y.E. We'll make note of that. Thank you, sir.
So yeah, absolutely, he's here.
Yeah, Mr. J., Mr. Wayne.
So.
That's an easy one.
And then Robin.
Robin, yeah.
I think Robin should be on that.
Okay. And what do you guys like for a third? Do you want to go with the Matthews? Keep a, keep a Matthews in there?
Yeah.
I don't know, Mr. Matthews or Mr. Norman.
J., you have, I don't, even want to put you on the spot, but is there any input that you have as a citizen who's involved with these other three that you say, hey, we should, you know?
I don't know Mr. Matthews. So any, I don't know, I think anyone on this list is, is on the list because they're interested.
They're interested, yeah.
In the project and want to do the best for the town, so, so no. Kent Wilkins, is he not a member of the board of COA, COA?
I don't believe he's a COA member, but he's on here as an at-large member. Cause he's part of the finance committee, so you would consider him like a.
So now, to answer your question, no, I don't have any other recommendations.
Alright, I mean, I just feel like that we have a citizen who's here is passionate enough to show up. You know, I would like.
Yes.
Well, unless you think I'm here for that.
Fair enough, good point.
I just, I will say that Norman Landerville has been involved, the COA subcommittee. He's actually, I believe he might be an architect.
He's done some of his own drawings.
He has, and he's been extremely passionate, so that's all he's involved in, Mr. Matthews.
Alright, so.
And I, of course Kathy Talbot has been to meetings and is very passionate as well. So I just wanted to tell you that's my.
Kathy is an active member of, and, and user of the COA and its programs. And Norman has, has definitely shown an interest. He was a member, or alternate, I believe initially of the original COA subcommittee.
Okay, and so there's some experiences, so I'll, I'll.
Yeah, Norman.
Alright, so I guess, so that would just tentative list would be Mr. J., Norman and Robin?
Correct.
Okay, so we got three there.
Three there. And then the members at large, we have four members at large. And then the people that submitted their names are Michael Q., Jeffrey Amaral, Amanda Barlow, Ken Wilkins, Bob Alderson, Brian Miller, Mark, sorry, Mark Fornick, Fornick Chair. Every time it's, I chew it up, sorry, Mark, and Cheryl Strilla. So right off the bat, Mike, a solid, solid member on the committee. I think Jeff and Amanda on other committees, they've been solid on other committees as well. I think that'd be two no-brainers there. And then the fourth.
I think Kent Ratliff.
Kent.
Yeah, for me, I think I'm, I mean, I love for Cheryl, you know, I think she, I value a lot of value. She's obviously very busy.
That's why, that's my concern, like she's so busy right now.
I'm very happy that she was, you know, threw her name in the hat. But, I mean, and obviously we're gonna have some alternative, some alternates, so I think that.
Right.
You know.
So we like that list, Mike, Jeff, Mander and Kent?
That's, yeah, that's what I was thinking.
Four, okay. And then now we're gonna choose two alternates added by the board of POS. Well, actually we gotta choose three, right? If Nicole is allowed to be on the committee, right, we'll check that.
Let's vote, let's, let's say that she is, and if she isn't, then we can always vote another member. Let's vote, let's, let's say that she is and if she isn't, then we can always vote another member. I think based on my communications, it seems like she should be, she would be, but I, I would double check the town council, so if you're inclined to, uh, put Nicole on, then I would put her on, given, you know, she's, she's got a big role here with the library. Um, and then if that doesn't work out, I'll bring it back to the board and you can vote.
Well, that's a member. Okay, so we're looking for one more, um, at-large or alternate board member.
Two more, right, because we said we're doing two alternates.
Two, right, right, two alternates. So, you know, Bob comes with, has a lot of financial background, so that's also good. So, can we choose from anyone or just?
Yeah, I think we choose from anyone, so we can do.
Yeah.
I mean.
So, here's my only issue, is if we take one from the library but not from the council on aging, are we swaying? Like, I don't know, does it make sense, you know, to do two people from at-large? So we're not putting more from COA or more from library, right? Where we say, okay, four from one and three from another, maybe it's not gonna be every time, but it could be. And then if there's voting that's happening, you have four people from, do you, does that make sense to you?
Oh, it does, it does.
I would do, so I would take the alternates from one from the library and one from the COA.
Okay, yes, exactly, so, so there you go, to that point, it'd be, this would be equal.
Absolutely.
To be equal, then, okay.
Yep. So, one library is Nicole, right? So, so Matthews is second, right? Is that how we're doing it?
Well, I thought, I thought we were gonna go with the assumption that Nicole can be on the board.
Yes.
She's, she's a, she's a core member.
So we can do.
Yes. So you do, yeah.
So make Linda Forney on the alternate?
Yeah, yeah, that works for me.
No, Linda Forney or?
Linda Forney.
No, she's already on there, she's on.
Yeah, Linda, Paul and Nicole.
Oh, you, Paul Sadik and then?
Oh, right, so I had that wrong.
So Linda Paul.
Paul and Nicole.
That's what I had, Paul and Nicole.
Well, Nicole was the alternate.
I think we had, uh, is a Linda, so that's why, that, that's how I had it on there. But, so now we, we get a pick between Paul and Beverly and between Thomas and Kathy, so. We talked a lot about Thomas before, so I say we stick with Thomas.
Thomas it is?
Yeah, he has some background, um, he's in the library planning and then he has some construction experience. Or my research.
Perfect.
So then Paul.
So Thomas Matthews is alternate, all right?
Between Paul and Beverly.
Definitely.
What, Paul, Paul?
Paul Lubin and Beverly Sadik.
So I have, so library representatives I have for, as one, two, three, it was Paul Forney, Linda Forney, Paul Sadik, Paul Lubin. That's the top three choices on that.
Interesting, I thought you had Nicole.
Right, but are you not gonna put Nicole on there?
No, no, I, I had Nicole as the alternate member, cause she didn't have, cause the way I looked at it was the alternate, cause not as, as a non-resident, but she get a vote, right? At a meeting, so I left her as an alternate to go to the board meetings, to go to the meetings, but not have, um, the voting, right? Because she's not a resident. But I want her, she's a core member, so I want her there. Does that make sense? So for, so as of right now, library representatives I have written down and correct if I'm wrong, one is Linda Forney, two Paul Sadik, three Paul Lubin. For the council of aging, I have Mr. J., Wayne, Wayne J., uh, Norman Landerville and Robin Kendrick as the three, with Thomas Matthews as the alternate. At-large members, I have Mike McQ, Jeff Amro, Amanda Barlow, Kent Wilkins.
Yep.
Right?
And then Boris Slakman?
It's Boris Slakman, rock, paper, scissors, no, this is kidding. Uh, so I'll continue, so on April eleventh, when we changed the, the makeup of the board, I voted, I raised my hand to do it, we all voted to say it. I'll stay on it, if that's okay with you guys.
That's fine, I made, I, I don't have really the time right now.
Absolutely. Um, so, okay, so I'll, I'll be the selectman there, um, I think that's it, right?
I think so.
All right. All right, so back to the discussion and voting, right? I entertain the motion for the following appointments to the library for the COA.
Hold on a second.
I just, I'm worried about not having Nicole on the board, I'm sorry, I'm just, that, that.
I'm actually kinda with you, yeah.
Well, no, she's on, she's an alternate, she's still on.
She's not holding power.
She's just so integral to this whole thing that I'd rather, I mean, I don't hope, but so, but I just, I just hold her pause there and need to rethink that one.
Okay. No, I just want Nicole in there.
She is the head of the library, if, if it works out, then she can be because she's not a resident, we can wait, isn't that?
So what if we did Nicole and then we have Linda as the alternate and then we can switch that if we have to?
Okay.
All right.
So whether it's the alternate, Nicole.
Does that work for everybody?
And if it needs to be changed afterwards?
Yeah.
I brought a few extra.
Yeah.
All right. There we go. So discussion, uh, January eleventh, I entertain motion to appoint the following members to the council on aging, library community, building committee, from the list of interested parties, this is an amendment A. The three parties from the library representatives is one, uh, Paul Sadik, two, Paul Lubin, three, Nicole, sorry Nicole,
Devonion.
Devon, Devonion, library director. Thank you. Uh, the next three parties from the council of agency representatives, one is Wayne J., two is Norman Landerville and three, Robin Kendrick, COA chair. With the alternate being Thomas Matthews. At, at-large members, four, one is Mike McQ, two Jeff D. Amro, three Amanda Barlow and four Kent Wilkins. And as far as the board of selectmen, I'm, I, I am the designee, um, Carlos A. Loops, uh, is the board of selectmen.
Is that good? All right, so I'll, I'll make that motion.
I have Thomas Matthews and Linda Forney as alternates.
Yes, yeah.
Correct.
So I'll make that, I'll make that motion.
I will second it. All in favor?
Aye.
That was a good one.
Let's get to work.
Four minutes later. Got it, got it. All right, dude.
I can have.
Then I move on to the next one, I believe, right? So, oh, no.
Well, we have the board of parks, board of parks commission.
Yep.
So.
So discussion of the public improvement, the boat ramp utilizing earmark funds. So as you know, over the last past year, it's been a very, uh, pretty, pretty busy time on the boat ramp. We got the kiosks put in, right? Which costs about twelve thousand dollars and then pretty much made it all, made it all back from, uh, admissions and tickets and everything else throughout the year. So that's, that's a great way for the, for the program.
Absolutely.
We hired staff that was down there, they were, they did a banged up job, he did a phenomenal, so kudos to them, uh, handling everything that's going on. Uh, but now kind of really, since we're starting looking at updating the ramp itself and the way it looks, right? So we reached out to the state to see what their suggestions are and right now they have a chain that they kind of close off the parking lot when the spots are filled. And if you look at the boat ramp, well, not the boat ramp, sorry, the beach, maybe even Porter's pasture, that little gate, standing gate that, and the attachment that we have, put one of those up, so it's easier for them to close off, so they're not really in traffic. Maybe even move the gate, maybe add some AC, some power, that way they, they're not sweltering in the heat all day. Um, so those are the kind of the ideas we're looking at doing and we just have, I believe some funds coming in from the state. I believe there was a grant, twenty-five K, is, am I, am I right on that, Deb?
Yeah, so our rep Schmidt, um, gave us an earmark, twenty-five thousand dollars. The, um, the thing, the earmarks is they have to be spent by June of, of the year, so June of, uh, two thousand and twenty-three. So I wanted to have this discussion about how the board would like to spend that money. It was for the operation of the boat ramp. We have had, uh, discussions with Doug Cameron from the state and, uh, I would just like to clarify that Luann is really the lead on this, she's done a tremendous job of working on that boat ramp and contacting people and taking care of things that need to be taken care of. As she reached out to Doug Cameron, it's agreed to give us a gate, a little more gate, which is one of the things, you know, the, uh, attendants have to go out there and like, what saw haws is out, chains across, it's very, very chaotic if you've been down there on the weekend, so the gate will make it a little bit easier for them to close and do what they need to do. So originally, we were talking about spending earmark money on a gate, but it looks like the state's gonna probably build for that. So now I'm like, okay, I have this twenty-five thousand dollars, I wanna go, what we wanna spend it on? Do we wanna spend it on looking into a shed or hut? We've talked about wiring electricity to the existing shed or moving the shed closer to the road and possibly wiring electricity to that. Um, different, different, just different ideas, so I really wanted to get the board's input in terms of, so we can start doing our legwork to bring back to what the cost would be, what we can and cannot do and things like that. Uh, I don't know if Luann has any ideas, again, like I said, she's really, uh, critical in the whole boat ramp.
Yeah.
Operations and she had to oversee it all summer long and is, knowing, so if you have any suggestions other than what we talked about?
The sliding.
The gate, but the gate, the state's gonna pay for that, right?
Right, he's looking for some alternates, so that the one that was in your packet was like a swing open and it was a couple parking spots. Or if someone's parked there, you wouldn't be able to close it.
We did a pocket gate.
Yeah, yeah, like a rolling gate.
So they're looking from, they don't have any of those in their areas or warehouses that they could supply to us, but they were looking for some options and will get back to us on those.
Okay, okay. I'd rather not lose any spots.
Yeah, maybe, I was looking, so that was funny, because that's one of the things I was thinking of, but I guess my thought was, well, if we could put it in and it can swing out towards the street, then at least it will be in the grass area versus going into the park.
You're right, it does have the little, almost like a little atrium, right, a little grass area that follows you in. Yeah, right, so if it swings into the grass.
Into the grass that way, then at least it could open and not block parking spaces. But it shows that, the picture shows it swinging into the parking spaces, or if it could, one, each, but your point is that they gotta close it and his cars parked there, they can't get around.
Yeah, so, so he's gonna, so, but that's something that sounds like they're going to pay for. Um, so again, we.
So we have, we sell twenty-five thousand that we can use for our, right?
Yeah, so wiring electricity to the hut, whether we get a new hut or we move the hut, I think would be, you know, a good addition.
Be great, yeah.
I think I'd like to, you know, you guys, like, if you guys provide, you know, a couple of options with some, some estimated cost for that and then we can make decisions from there, really, at the end of the day, it's whatever, my opinion, it's whatever makes, you know, the, the folks who are working down at the boat ramps life a little bit easier. And, you know, allows us to provide better services to the folks in the town, right?
Well, you see, reach out to them and ask them, ask them, say, hey, you worked there for three months.
Yeah, where are your pain points?
Well, yeah, what was the?
Yeah, I did brief with them before they left too, so we kind of have a lot of that, that information.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Cause like, one thing that comes to mind, like waste, like waste mitigation there, cause I know, you know, trash is always a problem, but I'm not sure if this grant has to be used by June of twenty twenty-three, if that's something we can really use, right? But maybe like some better, you know, trash, um, like, just like trash cans, right? Things of that nature, by all means, so.
All right, we'll, we'll work, we'll continue to work on it, then the ideas that we have, we just kinda wanted to revisit that, so.
And I don't know about condition the parking lot and if that's something the state will work on, right?
It's always a weird, weird.
The lines are a little weird, the lines are kind of low place.
They repainted the lines this year, but they are in, they are in the process of putting in plans for rehabbing the, the boat ramp on their dime, so that, all of that, which was originally, so when we asked for this earmark, we were like, thinking we would do those improvements, but the state has come down, met with us a couple of times and has said that they are working on the plans to do all of that there. So then I was like, oh, we, now we have this money and we now need to do something with it, so.
And it might also be, oh, sorry, I'm sorry.
No, that's it.
So one of the other things might be as far as, one of the, I know we had talked at one point, it's probably not tough to do with the same amount of money, but it's like docking for boats to, to tie up to when someone goes to, um, you know, they.
Like a floating dock.
Launch their boat. Yeah, they launch their boat and if they're by themselves, they're now running around to try and get it, to get back over their vehicle to get it out. So if they have something to tie off to, it might make it easier, it's like, it's just a thought and that might be nothing to do within that.
No, it's a really good idea, I'm just wondering, I'm just trying to figure out how much.
So looking at the square footage, how much a dock costs, we, we did a rough estimate in summertime, just looking at open, open source material online, it'd be, it was well into the six figures as far as a, a dock, a hundred feet long, uh, off to the side, so that people can kind of pull over and, and wait in line as you pull in and out. They didn't, that kind of brought up an idea from the state that they wanted to redo the dock, the, the, that ramp itself, that would close down the ramp for six months. And they can't be pouring concrete in the wintertime, so they would can't, they would shut it down during spring, summertime, but you probably wouldn't go over very well with the residents.
Well, that, that ramp is disintegrated.
Correct, at least get down at some point.
We, we end up hiring, we're gonna have to pick parts of the concrete out.
Metal jar, metal jabs of, of.
Yeah.
So that, so, but yeah, the state has agreed to redo that.
Right.
Um, so, and then just keep in mind, everything that we suggest has to be approved by the state.
So maybe this may, to your point, maybe we, whatever improvements we try to do, we try to err towards the simpler stuff, right? Because we're not gonna have to.
Well, we, we can always vote the ideas to Mr. Cameron from, from the state and see what he has to say, what he's willing to do and what he's not willing to do. Um, and the other thing I will, just so you know, I've been, um, I think working with Lakeville as well and we've been talking about the backup that happens when the gate does get shut and we're working with Massey O.T. to get better signage out there. So they know that like, you can't park here, you have to keep going, if the gates show, close, just keep going. Maybe a sign that tells them when the parking lots fall, like a blinking sign so they know as they approach, they can't even try to pull in.
Like when you go to Logan?
If we get power, we send you up to another. So I was thinking about that, if we get power to the shed, then we could have a, I don't know, work off the kiosk in a sense and like have it publicly stated online.
That's the other thing, yeah, we were trying, trying to figure out like.
So that you can log into like the boat ramp, hey, do I have a spot available, but can I go dock my, my boat? Two spots available, let me get there now, type of thing, but that's down the road.
Power, is there like light there?
There's nothing, there's no power.
No power at all?
That's why power plus.
That's a quick win. Just from a safety perspective, like having some, having it lit, yeah, I got it, would, uh, would be probably a nice to have.
Yeah, that's what, I think that is, I mean, they.
Yeah, that, that kind of sounds like.
Charge phones or run a fan, whatever it may be. So, and we'll work through that and come back to the board and get some more information.
All right, so we have public hearing in two minutes?
Yeah, they will update on grants.
Yeah, we'll just give you a bit of update, so there's just a couple of things before that, um, a couple of things that are going on. Um, the tree lighting at the Bannister is scheduled for December eleventh, from five to seven thirty, can't believe it's even that time of year. Um, that's just so everybody knows, that's December eleventh. I'm actually really excited, it was a great time last year, so I really enjoyed that. Um, grants, so recently a lot of the grant, uh, notices came out, the town was awarded seven hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to work on the sewer, the engineering of the sewer line, to help accommodate for the zoning that we're gonna have, a place around the MBTA station and the industrial park up at the end of town. So that's, um, that'll be exciting, I'll be working on that, I'm already actually working on that with the stakeholders and I'll be working with the sewer issues, the engineering piece. Yeah, the grant we got was seventy-five thousand dollars for a planning grant, which will pay a portion, uh, 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 to have the master plan done for the town of Free Town, which we have never had one, I just, it's hard for me to believe that, but we have never had a master plan. So we, we have the seventy-five thousand, we'll be looking for another grant from Sorpev to match that in the amount of forty thousand dollars. Um, I do believe the town, we committed nine thousand dollars to this as well, to have a master plan done, which will take a, a year or two, uh, and we will be keeping Victoria very busy in the planning department.
Yeah.
So, but I'm super excited about that one, that's in my warehouse and I'm really excited for the town to get that done. We are still looking on the complete streets grant that has, um, you know, identified intersections in town, uh, I met, we've all met with Victoria and, and Chief Abbott and checked back on her and said, oh, where are, where are our issues in town? And ten different issues have been identified and now, uh, the, the plaintiff wants continuing to work on that, but once those are identified, we can then apply for grants to complete the work or do the work on the intersections and they give up to five hundred thousand dollars for those, so, um, we'll continue to go forward on that and, um, those, those are the current grants that have just come out, we're applying for another one, Safe Roots to School Grant, an ADA Grant and we're waiting to hear our hazard mitigation grant, so.
I love it.
That's where we're at with our grants.
Thank you.
Just a mental note real quick, once we get the master plan grant, right, and that's completed, that opens up many, many more grants that we want to follow now because now we have this place, this plan in place, so to me, like you, Deb, I'm very excited for that one.
Awesome. All right, I think it's seven o'clock, so I'm gonna open the public hearing, so, uh, notice nine thirty twenty twenty-two, Town of Freetown Public Notice, notice is hereby given that an application has been filed for a change of manager to Christopher G. Carey for an existing alcohol beverage retail license, wine and malt beverages, for Neon Beverages LLC, thirty-three dash thirty-six Innovation Way, Freetown, Massachusetts, O two seven O two. Public hearing to consider the above matter will be held on Monday, November seventh, twenty twenty-two at seven P M. Police, uh, police station community room, fifteen Memorial Drive, East Freetown, Mass. Uh, O two seven one seven, and public hearing is now open. Thank you, gentlemen.
Good evening, this is the chairman, members of the board, for the record, attorney Thomas Kilmarnon, on behalf of the African Neon Beverage LLC. With me tonight is Christopher Carey, uh, who is the proposed, uh, new manager for the entity. Uh, this was a liquor license that this board granted maybe about a year or so ago for the new neon beverage that's been constructed and just opened maybe about two and a half, three weeks or so ago, they're very excited. Uh, the original.
Wanted today.
Excellent, good, like to hear that. So the original manager, um, that was listed on the application, left the employ of Neon Beverage, Mr. Carey has taken over, he's been with the company for about six months. He's gonna be at the property at least forty hours, but he told me probably more like forty-five to fifty hours per week, maybe to his chagrin, but that's how often he'll be there. Uh, Mr. Carey has been, uh, in the restaurant industry, uh, for a good twenty-five years before moving over and working for Neon, so he's been around uh, serving of alcohol, he's been on other liquor licenses in the past, he's TIP certified, and I would suggest to the board that he's, uh, more than qualified to, uh, be an appropriate manager on this liquor license.
Awesome. Yeah, I, I went over your material, nothing looks eye-popping, nothing to be discussed. We went there to the grand opening the other day, looks like you have a good team behind you, so, welcome.
Thank you.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One thing, so I wonder if today I try to see if my Powerball ticket won? So, yes, we are, we are in the process of getting a lottery. It's a litigation with.
That's a state, uh, level?
Yes, yes.
We should try to tell them.
We should have that, we soon, that should be soon.
Though aside that, it was a wonderful experience.
Appreciate it, thank you very much, everyone.
Yeah, it's my, I was told, get the app. It makes your life easier, get the app, get more discounts, but I will say, your chicken sandwich you guys put out there? Wasn't it for the grand opening, I won't fault you for that, but I haven't tried it since, I saw the sign, I was like, you know what? I have to tell the public, public station.
We just, we just run that one first, thank you.
Very good, I'll give you some credit, appreciate it, thank you.
Alright, so, I mean, it seems straightforward to me, obviously, this is just something we have to do, um, any other questions? And now, should I close the public hearing before I, uh, vote on it?
Yeah, you have to take any more information, you're all set?
I mean, seems, yeah.
Yeah, cert, my biggest question was, is he certified?
Yeah, I mean, to answer all those questions.
Yeah, we, we did submit a copy of his certification with the, uh, with the application.
Yeah. Corey's good, the application's good, the license is good, TIP certified, I think it looks pretty straightforward, um, and in line with what we're looking for in some bowling liquor licenses now. So we appreciated your diligence, providing it to the board and for us to review for the last couple days, so again, thank you, Mr. Carey, and of course yourself.
Thank you.
Thank you, boss, appreciate it, thank you.
Alright, so, um, with that, thank you, I'll close the public hearing. We don't need to vote on that, perhaps? I was gonna, it's around, you have to vote, do we close it?
Number eighteen.
Yeah, we'll have to vote on the actual, like, to close the public hearing, alright?
Right?
So, yeah, so I'll close the public hearing, then I'll entertain a motion, um, to approve the request for change to manager, uh, quick, sorry, request of change of manager to Christopher G. Carey for Neon Beverages LLC.
Motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, great, we're all set.
Thank you very much.
If I think this don't work tomorrow, I'm still gonna come back and ask you what.
So, we're just gonna sign and then move on? Oh, they're already answered. I gotta sign these for you too, I'll get back to those.
Mine's still filed.
Oh, wow.
Ooh, I didn't sign this. I know, you got stuck tonight.
I'm just gonna do this.
We had to build a few trees as well.
I'm gonna make copies for other departments.
You can't do doctor sign, have to be a, a lot doctor sign. Alright.
Surplus. All traffic contracts. Washing manholes. Seeping pits, I still wanna know what that is.
Nobody knows.
It's a hole that's still in it, the town, the landmark is like.
I'm surprised that the toilet didn't make the list. I'm surprised it didn't make the list, it sits right there, all the stuff's on top of it, I just saw.
It just sounds so funny, it's washing manholes, seeping pits, it's like.
Couple tunnels kicking in.
I use a, with a punch this.
It's like I was reading all the different ones on, on the personality on the right. Twelve way, twelve, twelve. Thank you, thanks. So early today, I was like, oh, I'm gonna knock down one, I was like, this is a game plan. It's like the last name Shunsun.
Reinforcements, Delta End List is. This is to physicals, covering infections. These are two features that talk as your vote for Neon Beverages has been exchanged, and then second one is for the alcohol beverage.
That's this, that's just down here?
Yeah.
Okay, this one's up too, guys.
We really want, we'll have the backup if we need it. Down here for collection.
We got a nice reminder for it. Two distractionals.
Alright.
You're done.
Thank you.
Alright, so with that, I'll entertain a motion adjourned.
Motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye.